November 4th, 2025, I'd like to call the Grand Chute Plan Commission Meeting to Order. Can I start with a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bantus?
Here.
Commissioner Crosby?
Here.
Commissioner Weber?
Here.
Commissioner Ulrich?
Just say me?
Commissioner Ulrich?
Yes, that's me, I think.
Commissioner Clausen?
Here.
Commissioner Showalter?
Here.
And we have Chair Brad Garing excuse tonight and Commissioner Torrance.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to elect a Plan Commissioner Vice Chair. Can I get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to elect Tim Bantus as Vice Chair.
Second, Clausen.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Vice Chair, the meeting is yours.
Okay, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So moved, Ulrich.
Showalter, second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No sign. Looking for approval of the minutes from the October 21st, 2025 meeting.
Weber, move to approve as written.
Crosby, second.
Weber and Crosby, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? No sign. Next is public input pertaining to agenda items. Do we have any public input pertaining to agenda items of tonight's meeting? Come up to the lectern and... Your name and address, please.
Hi, respected Commissioners, my name is Neil Mix and my address is 1355 West Casual Court. Some of you may remember at the October 21st meeting, I showed up requesting a delay to the Harmony Grove proposal. I saw that Habitat for Humanity was on the docket again for this evening for a different location. I reviewed the plans. It is a very different situation than the Harmony Grove situation. There's a pond reservoir right there. The land is higher up, doesn't face nearly the same water issues as the Harmony Grove plat. And it's right next to the road there, should be easy to get into the storm sewers if needed. I don't see any significant potential water issues there, and so I wanted to let you all know that I don't see any potential issues with that. And I felt, having gotten to know John through this process, that it was worth me coming here tonight to say that I support the proposed development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, no public input, and no further public input. We'll move on to number seven, preliminary plat PP-02025 requested by Greater Fox City's Habitat for Humanity, 3822 North Gillette Street. Parcel number 101-062501 for the preliminary plat for Habitat's Gillette Street plat. Action by the commission tonight will be to recommend approval or denial of PP-02-25. Mike?
Thank you, Vice Chair. So the subject property we're looking at here is about 1.67 acres in size and has just under 300 feet of frontage onto North Gillette Street. The existing home, which is included and shown on the preliminary plat, would remain. The intention for Habitat is to use that as part of their programming and do some rehab to that home and then put one of their families into that existing house that is there now. And they would also create three additional lots as part of this preliminary plat. Did want to highlight, as I kind of outlined in my staff report, for what it's worth, this land subdivision would be allowed under the Town of Grand Chute requirements by Certified Survey Map. So the town subdivision requirements are restrictions, I should say. They allow up to four parcels to be created by CSM within a five-year period, so after five years, that resets. This land was last subdivided back in 2006, so for our rules, if you will, this could happen just by Certified Survey Map. The county has a similar lot restriction, but they don't have a time component to it, so that goes forever. So if it ever gets subdivided by CSM and meets their minimum or their maximum splits by CSM, then it goes to apply. So this has happened over the years a few times when subdivisions could have been done by CSM, but because that county doesn't recognize or doesn't have a time component to their restriction, it has to be applied. So that's kind of why we're at this plating process now. The lot with the home would be about 0.6 acres in size, and then the three additional single-family lots, 0.36 acres respectively. All the lots do meet the size standards outlined in the Grand Chute Subdivision Code, but for one exception, and that is due to the existing depth of the property. So we have a width versus depth ratio in our municipal code, which dictates that the width shall be no... I'm sorry, the depth shall be no more than two and a half times the width. So I think if you had a 100-foot lot, you'd maximum could have a 250-foot depth to that lot. Because of the depth that we're dealing with here with the existing lot, and also some other factors, most notably, there's some environmentally sensitive areas on the south and east sides of this property. In addition, the town has a desire not to allow any access off of Evergreen Drive. We kind of talked about that a little bit at Town Board when we actually went through the sale of this property to Habitat. So for those reasons and some exception language that's in our municipal code, staff is comfortable with the lot configuration as proposed. Town engineer will need to approve stormwater management and erosion control plans, and that will be part of the final plat. And I would just, I just noted as well that if there are any impacts, which I don't know of any at this point, but if there were impacts to any environmentally sensitive areas, and I did include a map of that in the packet, which is shown here. So you can see very limited areas are on site that would either qualify as floodplain or floodway. If any of those are impacted, they'd have to be permitted by the appropriate regulatory agencies, being Oregami County, FEMA, DNR, et cetera. Would like to mention that the proposed preliminary plat is compliant with the Town of Grand Chute Comprehensive Plan and addresses a couple of the housing goals and objectives of that document. The preliminary plat meets the standards of Town of Grand Chute Municipal Code with the exception I previously outlined. And again, prior to any site development, that both the town and Oregami County would need to approve a final plat. So with that, staff does support a Plan Commission Recommendation for Approval of Preliminary Plat PP-02-2025. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions? So the house is staying, correct?
Correct.
And the two outbuildings are being demolished?
They're staying. So as a condition of the sale to Habitat from the town, one time owned this property, as a condition of that sale, the town has rights to use those two buildings for storage. There's some public works and streets and parks equipment in there. We have those rights until... They have to look to be exactly sure, but it's into, I think, 20, late 2026 or 2027. I apologize, I don't have the exact date. It's for the foreseeable future.
Okay. I just wanted to get that clarified, that, you know, the buildings are still being used.
Yep, and then we did put, I guess, somewhat of a restriction on those properties that their future use, like after the town relinquishes their rights to use as a storage, when we make other accommodations for our equipment, that Habitat can use those, you know, but for storage for them, so they can't be rented out, that kind of thing. Storage for their own equipment and operations, that kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Ulrich, move to approve.
Showalter, second.
Motion to approve preliminary plat PP-02025 by Ulrich and seconded by Showalter. I'll entertain a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Number eight, preliminary plat PP-03-2025 requested by the Town of Grand Chute on behalf of Tyco Built LLC for the preliminary plat of Foxport Subdivision located on 8.88 acres of land on the northwest corner of West Grand Chute Boulevard and North White Hawk Drive. Parcel number 101-032901. Action by the commission tonight will be able to recommend or approve or deny the preliminary plat 03-2025. Mike?
Thank you, Vice Chair. So there's a pending offer to purchase on this, approximately 6.4 acres of this property that's owned by the town. In total, the property is approximately 8.88 acres and is currently zoned PDD Plan Development District. And the underlying master planning document for that is the Town Center District Master Plan. This plat, our preliminary plat utilizes the Cluster Subdivision Code, our portion of our municipal code, and allows these smaller lot sizes and reduced setbacks, which allows greater flexibility and also will allow for a more affordable price point for these homes as the lots will be obviously much smaller, correspondingly smaller, single-family homes. There is one deviation from the Cluster Subdivision section of our municipal code, and that is the public road. So that section, if you will, of our zoning, our municipal code, is really based on a private road scenario. It basically would, requires you to go through a planned unit development process and utilize a private road for access to these lots. In talking with the development team, that was viewed as more of a hindrance, so if we're kind of counterintuitive, if we're trying to create a more affordable price point with these smaller lots and smaller homes and more of affordable development, it's really counterintuitive to then put a private road within that, because that, of course, comes along with long-term maintenance obligations and additional costs for those residents. So it just didn't work in this scenario. I did discuss this pretty thoroughly several months ago with our town attorney, and he and I both agreed that there would not be any issues with going forward with this cluster subdivision concept with a public street. So that's what you're seeing here before you, that right away is reflected, reflecting a public road being installed in there. So the proposed development would include 21 new single-family residential lots. They are small, again, so they range in size from about a little over a tenth of an acre to a little under two tenths of an acre. There's an outlot located on the west side of development to accommodate stormwater management in Lot 13, which is located in the southwest corner of the property. That would remain under town ownership for the time being for future sale and development. Our intention is to sell that and develop that as a commercial lot. If that doesn't come to fruition, we would probably reengage these developers or another residential developer just to add additional single-family homes in that location as well. Believe the developer, development team working on this preliminary plat has somewhat planned on that as a contingency. But again, the goal would be to sell that and develop that as a little bit higher, more intense use than residential, but I guess time will tell. Town engineer stormwater approval and erosion control plans will be a requirement of the final plat. And again, there are some nearby, and I would say some environmentally sensitive areas that will be impacted by this development, most notably with the stormwater pond on Outlot 1. So when talking with the town or with the engineer that's working on this project just this afternoon, there will be some impacts to flood fringe, which is identified as Zone X on the map I'm showing now. And there may be some wetland impacts too, but again, those would need to be permitted by the appropriate regulatory agencies, whether it's DNR, FEMA, Oregami County, et cetera. The preliminary plat does align with the Town of Grand Chute Comprehensive Plan, future land use map, and addresses some of the housing goals and objectives as well. Development is also compatible with the Town Center District Master Plan that, as I mentioned previously, does serve as the underlying master planning document for this planned development district. Would also note that the Town Board would need to approve a roadway development agreement outlining responsibilities of the developer and town prior to any site development, as well as both town and county approval of a final plat. With that, staff does support a Plan Commission Recommendation for Approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I have a question. And the road that we're talking, going through there now, is that road going to be wide enough that they don't have to transport snow?
Yeah, they'll have, it'll be a standard town road.
Okay.
The terraces may be a little bit small, so that's something to consider. I haven't talked thoroughly, I mean, obviously, this has been reviewed by Public Works Team as we've gone through the preliminary plat process we brought to our Site Plan Committee. None, no issues were noted at that time. I would think that they could at least, you know, try to push more of that snow maybe down towards the outlot or towards even our commercial lot for the time being. I just don't know. They have reduced setbacks, they're going to have a little bit of a reduced terrace, but I think we would still try to keep a standard, because the plan is to put sidewalk on White Hawk and then to put sidewalk on just one side of the future street, so there wouldn't be, so these houses that front White Hawk that are kind of, have double frontage, they wouldn't be double-loaded with sidewalk, because it's kind of overdoing it a little bit, in my opinion. So we would only put sidewalk on the west side of the new street. So that should help provide some snow storage there. They will be tight. I'm not going to try to pretend that it's not going to be. But I think that with this concept, one thing I didn't mention, now that you mention it, Commissioner Showalter, we did have the engineers working on this overlay the largest fire truck apparatus turning template, because especially that southern bend is a little bit of a short or it's a very sharp radius in that curve. So they did confirm that that, that the largest fire truck apparatus would still be able to make that turn. The one on the north side is a little more traditional, it's, you know, it's a 90-degree angle, but this one on the south side was a little bit more worrisome. And our fire department representative on our Site Plan Committee had brought that up, and we just got confirmation about that today.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Crosby, move to approve.
Clausen, second.
Motion by Crosby, seconded by Clausen to approve preliminary plat PP-03-25. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes carry it. Number nine on the agenda, Site Plan SP-24-2026 requested by Buttermore Country Club, 3600 West Prospect Avenue for the construction of an accessory building. Action will be to approve or deny SP-24-2025. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, thank you. So the applicant's proposing a 2,500-square-foot accessory building at the Buttermore Country Club. And this will essentially be a cart barn, so they can store golf carts inside, they can wash them inside. Exterior of the building is going to be a combination of LP smart side metal panels and masonry elements, which do meet our code. There's essentially no new impervious, so onsite stormwater is not required. Town engineer is reviewing the drainage and erosion control plans, and that's a condition of site plan approval. Landscape and site lighting has been approved by staff and all other code requirements have been met. I will add that I forgot to add the condition on the recommended action, so staff has reviewed and supports Plan Commission Approval of SP-24-2025, and then with the one condition of the town engineer approval of the drainage erosion control, but it's not on the memo.
Any questions from the commission?
Can you repeat that last sentence again?
Yeah, so the one condition's not listed on the recommendation of the memo, but it's still a condition of approval for the town engineer approval of the drainage erosion control.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Ulrich, move to approve.
Crosby, second.
Motion by Ulrich, seconded by Crosby to approve, request by Buttermore Country Club, 3600 West Prospect Ave. For the construction of an accessory building. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes carry it. Number 10, Site Plan SP-25-2025 requested by duly noted LLC doing business as Avia Wealth Management, 2101 North Castelloma Drive for the construction of an additional to an existing commercial office building. Action will be to approve or deny SP-25-2025. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, thanks again. So they're proposing a 5,000-square-foot addition to the Avia Wealth Management site, just to accommodate the growing business. The exterior is going to be primarily masonry with some vinyl accents, and realistically, they're trying to match the other existing building. It does meet our architectural standards. Site access from Castelloma Drive is not going to be altered as part of this request. To accommodate the additional impervious, the existing stormwater pond on the eastern side of the site is going to accommodate that. Town engineer is reviewing the drainage erosion control plans, and that's a condition of site plan approval. Landscape and site lighting plans have been approved by staff and all other code requirements are met with this request. So staff has reviewed and supports Plan Commission Approval of SP-25-2025. And again, I forgot the condition on the recommendation, so with the one condition of town approval of the drainage EC.
Did everybody hear that, the condition?
Same as before.
Same as before, erosion control, right?
Yep.
Approval of any, okay, I just wanted, you just were a little hard to hear.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
All right, no problem. Any questions from the commission? No questions. Noted, I'll entertain a motion on Site Plan SP-2025.
Showalter moves for approval of SP-25-2025.
Ulrich, second.
Motion to approve Site Plan SP-2025 by Showalter, seconded by Ulrich. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes carry it. Number 11 is adjournment, looking for a motion for adjournment.
Showalter moves to adjourn.
Crosby, second.
Motion by Showalter, seconded by Crosby to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We're adjourned. Opposed, thank you, we're adjourned.
I feel so naked without Brad here. I said, I feel so naked without Brad here, next to me.
I feel naked without Brad here.
Did you want me to scream that across the room?
Good evening, everybody, it's Tuesday, November fourth at six thirty P M, I'm calling the Town of Grandchute budget public hearing to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Hailing?
Here.
Bantus?
Here.
Lear?
Here.
English?
Here.
And Gerring is excused.
I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Anyone?
We probably.
Do you want to open the public hearing?
We probably need to open the public hearing.
I'm sorry, item number C is to open the public hearing, twenty twenty six proposed budgets for Grandchute sanitary districts numbers one, two, and three, and the Eastside Utility District.
We typically have a mo- have a motion to open, second in a vote, and then after the public hearing, a motion to close.
Okay, I apologize. Can I have a motion to open?
Haley moves to open the public hearing.
Mayor's seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, the public hearing is now open, is there anyone who wishes to speak? Thank you. State your name, please, and address.
My name is Linda Biella, thirteen thirty-three North Lake Court in Grandchute, I am speaking on behalf of the legal women voters of Appleton Fox Cities. I've been able to attend or review the audio files of all the budget workshops, as well as the budget document itself. I'm looking forward to the new live stream and video recordings of board meetings, which will make it even easier for Grandchute residents to follow town board deliberations. As an organization dedicated to promoting active citizen participation in government, the league applauds this additional service. We would also like to commend the board for undertaking a townwide housing survey. An action plan is being developed with an eye to increasing single-family lots, which are in short supply everywhere. In addition, the development of a strategic plan is a very positive step. I was able to participate in one listening session with other Grandchute residents, and found it to be very productive and professionally moderated. This budget reflects careful fiscal management and environment when shared revenue and levy limits make it difficult for local governments to make ends meet. Some of the highlights that I noticed are as follows. According to staff, surveys conducted by staff, Grandchute ranks below average in staffing in several departments compared to similar-sized Wisconsin municipalities. A three point five percent salary increase for non-union employees was approved, which should help make the town more competitive. All the additional staff requests were approved, except for three additional firefighter paramedics. The town board will prudently revisit that request mid-year twenty twenty six, when more data on the cost-effectiveness of ambulance services is available. The purchase of Granica's software used by Appleton and Greenville will provide greater transparency into town government meetings, agendas, minutes, and supervisor votes for the public. This will be implemented in early twenty twenty six and integrated into the redesign of the town's decade-old website. These improvements will make the website more user-friendly for the public. With four elections slated in twenty twenty six, the purchase of a backup server for Badger Books will help to ensure efficient and accurate election results, and prevent the situation that occurred last year when the server failed, and elections workers had to work until the early morning hours to tally ballots by hand. The concern over underfunding of road improvements persists, because the town will not be able to keep up with its maintenance schedule with an annual budget of four point five million dollars. We thank all the supervisors and the professional staff for their time and dedication in service to the citizens of Grandchute. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item? I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Haley moves to close public hearing number one.
Mayor's seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the public hearing is closed. We're up to item D, public hearing number two, this is on the twenty twenty six proposed budget for the Town of Grandchute. I could entertain a motion to open the hearing.
Haley moves to move, or moves to open public hearing number two.
Mayor's seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to public hearing number two? Anyone? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Haley moves to close public hearing number two.
Mayor's seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the public hearing is closed, now we're moving to adjournment, is there a motion?
Mayor moves to adjourn.
Haley's second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Now we're up to the town, excuse me, the Town of Grandchute Sanitary Commission on Tuesday, November fourth. I'm calling this meeting to order, can I get an approval of agenda and order of the day?
Bantus so moves.
Mayor's seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, we're up to item number C, the oath of office.
If we could have firefighter E M T, Kayden Wilson, up to the front, please. Yep, move forward a little bit more, and one eighty, there you go, thank you. This is Kayden Wilson, he's our newest firefighter E M T, Kayden has been a familiar face for us, actually, we've seen him grow considerably over the time that he's been with us. So, he actually started out as a E M T ride-along through Fox Valley Technical College, and it was great to see him, because he always came in with a smile on his face, willing to learn, very enthusiastic, and somehow we were able to grab a hold of him, it was kind of okay. So, he proceeded through his education and through his training, he ended up getting to be an intern with us, and then eventually into part-time, where now he is currently going through paramedic school. It's pretty awe-inspiring to see a young individual with his work ethic, character, and determination. This is somebody who doesn't sit down from the moment he gets into the firehouse, it's really pretty inspiring. It's also very encouraging to see his thirst for knowledge, and the camaraderie and respect that he has generated from the senior members in the department, so it's really pretty fantastic. So, we'd like to offer Kayden his oath of office. And if we could have your significant, your designated person to come and pin you, please? And board members, if you could congratulate. So in traditional fashion, whenever somebody gets hired, they get three books, and the fire chief's apparently not on the top of his game tonight, because normally I bring them with me, but I'll get them to you when I get to the station. So the three books are The Five Love Languages by Gary Chapman, The Total Money Makeover by Dave Ramsey, and by Jaco Willings, Extreme Ownership, so.
Is there any public input tonight?
There's none.
Can I get approval of the consent agenda?
Haley moves approval of consent agenda for October.
Mayor's seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, and the financial reports?
Bantus makes a motion to approve paid vouchers for November fourth, twenty twenty five.
Mayor's seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, we're up to item G, resolutions, consideration of S D one zero one two zero two five, a resolution adopting the annual budget and appropriating funds for the operation of the water utility of the Town of Grandchute Sanitary District number one for the year twenty twenty six and levying for same. Yes.
Thank you, Madam President, this first resolution is for the water utility, this is for the public fire protection charge that we choose to place on the tax levy, the amount is unchanged from the prior year.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Haley moves approval of S D one zero one twenty twenty five.
Bantus seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, next is consideration of S E D zero one two zero two five, a resolution adopting the annual budget and appropriating funds for the operation of the Eastside Utility District of the Town of Grandchute for the year twenty twenty six and levying for same.
This resolution is substantially the same, just much smaller dollar amount for the Eastside Water Utility.
Is there a motion?
Haley moves approval of E S D zero one twenty twenty five.
Bantus seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Now we'll consider adjournment.
Haley moves to adjourn.
Mayor's seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. It's still Tuesday, November fourth, I'm calling the Grandchute Town Board meeting to order. Can I get approval of the agenda and order of the day?
Bantus so moves.
Mayor's seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, now we're up to item C, the audit presentation, Director Watson?
Thank you, Chair, this is annual exercise we go through to present the results of the, in this case fiscal year twenty twenty four audit. With us tonight, we have Riley Hutter from Clifton Larson, to give us a little presentation on the results of the year. So with that, I'm going to call Riley up to the podium.
Welcome.
Thanks. So my name is Riley Hutter, if you want to get to the introduction slide, my name is Riley Hutter, I'm a manager with Clifton Larson Allen, with over eight years of experience performing state and local government audits, compilations, reviews, budget assistance, and lead our rate case study team, and other various consulting. So I've been the manager on this audit for the past four years now, my role within the audit is to handle a lot of the detail, review procedures, and some of the more complex sections. So I'm going to start just with a quick overview of the audit process, some of our required communications, then I will get into financial numbers after that. So, just start with audit process, you know, to start off planning, we work with Tom to get our scheduling for the year sorted out. Then interim fieldwork typically starts in the fall, we do a lot of our internal control procedures, walk through, you know, different billing tests, things like that, that aren't year-end procedures. And then we move on to our final fieldwork, which is in usually about April, in the springtime, that consists of the majority of our audit procedures, substantive testing, discussions with Tom, you know, working through different complex sections and areas. Then we move on to the delivery and wrap-up, that really consists of preparing the financial statements, the M D and A preparation, our quality review process, and then your end result, which is the audit. Moving into required communications, so within your, within your act fur, there is a few different letters, but I'm just going to give you, you know, summary overview of that. So, our responsibility as auditors, under generally accepted auditing standards, is to provide an opinion on the fairness of the financial statements. So we review your internal controls, use risk-based procedures, based on those controls, we use a scope, so we don't test every single little transactions, but we use a scope, and that's how we design our audit procedures. So then our end result is the opinion that we express based on those tests. There are a few new significant accounting policies this year, you'll find those within note one in your footnotes, the main one being GASB statement number one hundred. This has to do with accounting changes and error corrections, and you'll really see it in your financial statements, you know, with your new E R P implementation, there are a few new funds, if they move from back schedules to front schedules, that's essentially the new GASB standard, so you'll see a new note in there related to that, doesn't affect any financial numbers, more just presentation of the financial statements. Another GASB standard we evaluated this year was GASB one oh one, related to compensated absences, that has to do with your sick leave vacation. So we work with Tom each year to implement any new GASB standards, and the effect of that standard was immaterial, so it is in effect, but didn't change anything significantly. And there were no unusual transactions noted. Continuing with required communications, there are estimates within your financial statements that are disclosed, so some of those estimates consist of, you know, usefulized fixed assets, Wisconsin retirement system, accumulated sick leave and fair value of investments. All the disclosures are adequate, clear, and complete, and there is some other information in your financial statements, that, a lot of it Tom prepares, related to statistical information that we don't offer an opinion on, but we do review and look over that information. And then there is also some supplementary information that is a part of our opinion, and we issue an opinion on. Continuing with required communication, so this is really kind of the meat of this letter, really is, there's a management representation letter that Tom and the administrator sign each year, and that is the town taking responsibility for the financial statements, so these are your financial statements, we prepare them on behalf of, on behalf of the town, but that's really what that management representation letter is doing. There was no consultations with other independent accountants, no major issues, and no difficulties encountered throughout the audit process. Corrected misstatements, so this has to. So this has to, I guess, really do with what we look at throughout the audit process. So there were two material adjustments, and when I say material, think significance. So where it had to be disclosed. So we made one adjustment related to accounts payable, and then one adjustment related to beginning fund balance. And that kind of had to relate back with the new implementation of the ERP system. There's some difficulties or, not difficulties, but some nuances that related to that that we adjusted through the audit process. And that's just disclosed that we identified it through the audit process, and it has to be communicated. But they were corrected, so there are no uncorrected misstatements. Everything we proposed have been corrected within your books and adjusted by Tom. So our opinion this year, unmodified clean opinion, that's what you expect to see, and that's what you've seen in the past. That's the highest and best opinion that you want to be seeing every year. As a part of the audit process as well, we have an internal control of financial reporting under government audit standards. And that is where we, you know, review internal controls and we list any findings if we have any. We did have one finding this year related to those adjustments that I just mentioned, where we made an adjustment throughout the audit process that was significant enough to disclose, but they, everything has been corrected. And that is a finding that you expect to see, you know, you can correct that going forward and something you'd want to strive to clear up going forward. And I don't have any doubts that that wouldn't be an area that you could fix. So there is no compliance or other compliance issues noted. And then feel free to stop me if you have any questions as well as I'm going through this. I'm going to get into more of the financial statement numbers throughout. And these numbers are really taken directly from your financial statements, kind of in a summarized view. So fund balance, kind of one of the more important areas that we like to discuss from a financial review standpoint. So your general fund, fund balance did increase this year to about 2.10,2 million compared to 8.6 last year. There's two items here I'd like to highlight. The assigned for subsequent year expenditures, that did increase as a result of board action. I believe you assigned 1.5 million for a fire truck. And that comes directly from your unassigned balance below. So even with, you know, assigning or committing that balance, your unassigned balance did also increase from 7.9 million, and it was about 7.7 last year. And I'll, I do have a graph coming up in a little bit that shows you that balance over time as well. Your special revenue fund balances are fairly consistent. I'm not going to go through anything here. I don't think there's, you know, anything significant really to mention. They did increase overall. You'll see that 1.2 million compared to a 1.1 million total balance last year. And then your capital projects funds, so your tax incremental districts and capital projects, both of those fund balances did increase significantly as a result of debt issuances in 2024. So that's what's causing those swings in the TIDS from, you know, 9.3 this year, and it had a deficit fund balance of 2.7 million last year. And then your capital projects, you know, also increased from 3.8 last year to 200,000 this year. Fund balance comparison, this is your general fund only, as I just mentioned. So this is really comparing your unassigned fund balance over the past four years. So in 2021, it was at about 3.9 million. You can see how that's increased over the past four years to where we're at, at 7.9 million today. There are some benchmarks that we look at from an audit standpoint. Typically, we recommend an unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your general fund budget expenditures between that 15 and 25% range. Typically, we've been seeing, you know, it's, or recommending to be on that higher side of that range just so you have a little more flexibility related to inflation. And you've seen, you know, costs really go up over the past few years. But if you take a look at your percentage as a percentage of unassigned fund balance, it's hovering around that 37, 36% in the last two years. And your minimum fund balance per, your policy is about 16. So you're over that, but I'd say it's a very healthy, healthy range. And, you know, it looks good from an audit standpoint to see you in that range. So. Any questions at all on fund balance? All right, I'll move into your sanitary districts now. So these are proprietary funds where we, I'll get more into the revenues and expenses. Your sanitary district number one, water. So you did implement new rates this, in 2024, I believe halfway through the year. So you'll see that there's now operating income of 179,000 versus an operating loss of 102,000 last year. So again, that's what you want to see, and that's what you want to see with that, you know, rate increase. And I expect that, you know, with a full year in 2025, you'll continue to see, hopefully, that operating income continue to grow a little so you can, you know, support your ongoing maintenance and capital projects that you have coming up in the future related to water. Sanitary district number two, sewer. There was an operating loss this year. It did increase to about 800,000 compared to 478,000 last year. I believe that's, you know, more increases in expenses. You can see expenses increased about 300,000. Just something to be aware of, something to be aware of, you know, with your sewer rates. Just making sure that you're able to continue to be able to fund, you know, maintenance, capital, and, you know, just something to monitor going forward. So the overall change in net position did decrease about 600,000 there this year. Sanitary district numbers three, storm. Another really good year for the stormwater district. So operating income of about 1.3 million compared to about 1.2 million last year. Very healthy, you know, operating income. And the overall change in your net position was about 1.5 million. So again, healthy to see that, you know, and make sure that you're generating that operating income so you can, you know, fund any capital repairs and maintenance type items. Just wanted to highlight the cash balances within the sanitary districts. So water, you'll see an overall decrease in cash in San One and Two, and the majority of that is due to, water cash was used up this year due to funding capital projects. So there's a lot of capital in water and I believe no debt issued. So a lot of that cash was used up for capital-related items. And I believe they did have to, there is, I think, a due to, or essentially, sanitary district number two funded some of those capital additions with the cash balances of, in sewer. So that's where you'll see that decrease there, I believe, about 3.2 million. So just something to be aware of, you know, on why those cash balances decreased. And then San Three, again, had a good year. So you'll see that overall cash balance increase to about 15 million from 11 million last year. One of the most important, I think, footnotes in your financial statements is your general obligation debt, just to track, you know, when your payments are coming due, how long outstanding your debt goes to, when it matures. So this really just gives an overview of your general obligation debt in the business-type activities, which is your utility funds. So that's continuing to be paid down over the past four years. And then your governmental activities, that's going to be your, the TIDS and capital project debt that was issued this year. So you'll see that increase of about 9 million this year. Continuing with general obligation debt, there is a statutory debt limit that you're legally obligated to stay under. So it's another kind of metric to look at. That statutory debt limit increases along with equalized value within the town. So that's where you'll see that debt limit kind of increasing over the past few years. And really, your outstanding debt has stayed fairly consistent from 49 million in 2021, and we're at 51 million now. So as that equalized value increases, your debt has, you know, stayed consistent or decreased as a percentage as what you're legally obligated to stay under. ARPA compliance, so this was a new, based on your ARPA spending this year, this was a new audit procedure that we had to implement. So if you, if you want to go to the next slide, Tom, there's a few different requirements. So there's kind of two options. We could have performed a full federal single audit where that looks at your, all of your federal funds, and then really kind of some more in-depth testing, you know, more time spent looking at that. Or there was this alternative compliance examination where we performed a compliance examination on your ARPA expenditures this year. So I think you spent about 1.3 million dollars in ARPA this year. So we took a look at all those expenditures, went through the examination procedures, and our intended purpose is to provide an opinion on that and say, within all material respects, the town, you know, followed all of the ARPA requirements that they were supposed to be following. And we had no findings noted. Everything, you know, looked good from that standpoint. So we, yeah, we did spend some extra time performing that, those procedures this year. Just one thing to note going forward, there is a future uniform guidance change. So if you have more federal expenditures, any new grants, the previous threshold is if you had, you know, 750,000 dollars or more of federal expenditures, that does trigger that single audit. That threshold does increase going forward in 2025 to 1 million dollars. So just something to be aware of if you, you know, have any new federal grants coming. I think historically, you've always been under that threshold with the exception of ARPA this year. So. Upcoming GASB standards, we look at, I won't get into the details of these just because it can get kind of complex, but GASB does come with this at all. So we work with Tom and implement these each year, you know, to stay GASB compliant. And so there are new, some new GASB standards coming out, one in 2025 and two in 2026, related to a few additional risk disclosures. The one in 2026, 103, I think will be more time-intensive, you know, from an audit and town staff standpoint where the M D and A will have to, I guess, kind of get more, even more detailed. So there might be some, you know, additional time spent there. And all the details are listed, but just to know it's coming forward, and we do look at that as part of the audit process. And then GASB 104, again, some additional disclosures, kind of more detailed disclosures coming. So. Any questions at all?
No questions, I don't think.
All right. Well, I just wanted to, yeah, say thanks, and thanks to Tom and Amy. You know, they're great to work with, and, you know, it's been a pleasure working with Tom over the years. So I know there's a lot going on, you know, with the ERP implementation process and audit at the same time, you know, that's a, it's a lot to handle, and he did a great job. So just wanted to give him a shout out as well, so.
We agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any public input? Uh, no. Okay, item E, consent agenda.
Haley moves to approve item one and two in the consent agenda.
Layer seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Financial reports?
Bantus moves to approve paid vouchers for November 4th, 2025.
Layer seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item G, new business. Consideration of fire engine purchased from Reliant Fire Apparatus Incorporated.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So according to our, in our CIP plan between 25 and 29, we had for another replacement engine. It is replacing a 2007 model. We went through with the competitive bid process with the cooperative purchasing through Sourcewell, got a purchase price. We were approved to spend up to 1.1 million dollars, I believe, much as we had just heard a few minutes ago. Our bid came in a little bit under that, so we were pretty pleased with that. And then by securing this and paying for it, we save not only the interest and the price increases, but we also reduce the amount of time that it takes to get this. It's down to, I believe it was 34 months from 54 months. So that's a considerable time savings, and that'll fit in our replacement plan. So we're asking the board for approval of this.
Is there a motion?
Haley moves to approve the purchase from Reliant Fire Apparatus under the 100% prepayment option, 34-month delivery time, in the amount of 1,021,437 dollars.
Layer seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item number eight, H, Resolutions. Consideration of TBR 132025. A resolution adopting the annual budget and appropriating funds for the operation of the government and administration of the Town of Grand Chute for the year 2026 and levying the same.
Haley moves approval of TBR 132025.
Bantus, seconds.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Next, we're up to resolution consideration of TBR 142025. Disallowing claim of Brett Evers, 903 West Lorraine Street.
Haley moves to deny.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Layer seconds.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Resolution consideration of TBR 152025. Authorizing the Town of Grand Chute application for the LRIP 2026-27 award cycle through the Wisconsin DOT for North McCarthy Road.
Bantus moves for consideration of TBR 152025. Haley, seconds.
Any questions? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Next, we're up to consideration of TBR 162025. Authorizing the Town of Grand Chute application for the TAP 2026-2030 award cycle through the Wisconsin DOT for County Highway JJ Trail.
Haley moves approval.
Bantus, seconds.
Are there any questions, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. We're up to aye ordinance consideration of O 082025, amending existing fee schedule.
Haley moves approval.
Layer seconds.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Next. It has come to our attention that one or more of the parties have been using the town's intellectual property and trademarks in a way that might be confusing to the public. Former Administrator Downey had been in touch with an attorney who specializes in this area. Attorney Garrett Galster. Attorney Garrett Galster is a specialist in this area and is available to answer the board's legal questions, explain the town's legal rights, and explain enforcement measures that the town could take in this regard in a closed session tonight. So if the board wishes to go into closed session for this purpose, for this reason, I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session if any board member is inclined to do so.
Just for the record, the agenda has two reasons that we're going into closed session tonight. One, to discuss ongoing litigation, and the other, to discuss the matters just explained by the chair. So a motion would involve reading the agenda item if anybody is so inclined.
Would you like me to read it? Motion to convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel about strategy regarding the current or likely, excuse me, or likely litigation specifically to discuss protection of town intellectual property rights. And the second reason would be Wisconsin statutes 19851G, conferring with legal counsel about strategy regarding current or likely litigation specifically to discuss state case number 2024, C V 00893, John Urban versus the Town of Grand Chute et al.
Lair moves to go to closed session.
Hailing seconds.
Roll call vote? Yes, please, a roll call vote.
Hailing?
Yes.
Bantus?
Yes.
Lair?
Yes.
In English.
Aye.